Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Hurst?
Ms. Hurst is going to join us remotely.
Thanks.
Got it.
Attorney Murphy?
Attorney Murphy. Attorney Murphy. Attorney Murphy, feel good health to you too, and he's joining us remotely.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Here.
Ms. Sarno?
Present. And also Superintendent Warwick is a little bit under the weather. He'll be observing on Zoom. And Superintendent Warwick, we hope you feel better in the meantime. Lead Chief Schools Officer Kim Wells will be pinching. I'd like to, we're going to rise for a moment of silence and a Pledge of Allegiance, but we're going to make that moment of silence for, we lost a lovely young lady, Isabel Alcida. She was a 2022 proud graduate of Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. And this just highlights to all you young people, young men and young women, about relationships and about domestic violence. And please, in your head, heart, and gut, if something doesn't feel right, then you get away from that person and go to someone you can trust. But tonight, we'll dedicate the moment of silence to Isabel, a beautiful and talented young lady. May God rest her soul for y'all, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, all nations under God indivisible with freedom and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Very special evening tonight. We are joined by our new student representative, who happens to be school committee woman's, Latonia Naylor's daughter, Patience Naylor. Welcome aboard. And we have our former student, school committee representative. He was on virtual school. Louis Gonzalez and his mom and dad are here. They've done a great job. And Patience is from Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. And also, very shortly, we'll have Pat Sullivan, who's our Director of Facilities and Parks Superintendent, who's just done a fantastic job. Patrick, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to approval of the Section Two, approval of minutes of December 14th, 2023, regular session and January 2nd, 2024 organizational meeting and January 11th, 2024 working session. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Gonzalez is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to voting items. And first, on Section Three, voting items. A is to approve the transfer of the parcel of land behind Duggan Academy as more particularly described on the attached plan from the School Department of the City of Springfield to the Parks Division of the City of Springfield Parks, Buildings, Recreation, Management Department. Said parcel of land is to be maintained as a public park, subject to approval of Springfield City Council. And the mayor, Pat Sullivan, is here to make a presentation. The field, Ted Plum field, looks fantastic, the complex, and we're glad that I was able to support it on the city side for my administration. But let me turn it over to Lead Chief School Officers, Kim Wells, for any opening comments here.
Thank you, Mayor. Pat Sullivan is here this evening to discuss the Duggan Park reconstruction and land transfer. This has also been through the Building and Maintenance Subcommittee with Subcommittee Chair Collins. So I'd like to turn it over to Pat.
Director Sullivan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the school committee. So we're very excited to be here. As you know, this project goes back to 2016. It's been a long dream of Mayor Sarno to make this field happen for the City of Springfield. And over the years, we acquired $1.7 million in different grant funds. And I have to give a really big thank you to Mayor Sarno and why he's so important to our city. And when we learned that there was an unregistered landfill here, and instead of walking away from the project, he appropriated another $6 million in bond money to address the landfill issue so the project could move forward to the tune of a $14 million bond. So there's over $16 million that have gone into this complex to make it safe for not only the students, but for the residents that abut this land. And it's now properly capped and with a beautiful complex of an artificial field. It will have athletic fields for baseball, soccer, new basketball courts, exercise fitness equipment, a beautiful track. It'll be open to the public. And we will work with the School Department on the permits for this parcel. And we will also work with the Conservation Commission to develop the wetland areas with trails so your science programs could access the land well. So I think it's really a win-win to the city. And Mayor, thank you again for not walking away from this and making it happen for our city.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions or comments to Director Sullivan? It's going to, as I said, it's going to be, Central has been fantastic. That field was being overused. We're redoing now the whole new baseball field. And city outside deserves that complex for youth development, not only in our schools, but for the young people of the neighborhood. And we've been able to parlay a number of our student athletes, male and female, who have parlayed their success both on the field and in the classroom to full scholarships. And that's what we want to continue to do. So appreciate that. I don't know if there's any questions or comments. I know it went through the Building Committee that's chaired by Mr. Collins?
Yes, actually, we went through it a couple of times, but it's got full support of the committee. We thought we had voted on it actually the last time, but we didn't. So we're taking the formal vote this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And again, it is going to be in the name of the legendary coach Ted Plum. The field that was taken away when we built the new Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. We had promised the family. And I know Gary Brown, the legendary sport writer for Republican, looks down from the, Steve, I see you're down here. And Pat looks down from heaven now because he always said, "Don't forget that." So very good. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So.
Motion by Ms. Gresham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Pat. We're now going to move to B, to approve a field trip request for Zenetti Montessori School students to travel to Red Gate Farm in Asheville, Massachusetts on June 5th, returning on June 7, 2024. We do these trips many a times. I'll turn it over to Lead Chief Schools Officers, Kim Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Zenetti is requesting to attend an overnight field trip to Red Gate Farm on June 5th, 2024. As the mayor stated, this is the same trip that many of our other schools have taken. The field trip is in your packet. And Melanie Lubis is here via Zoom. If you have any questions, I recommend approval of this trip.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wells. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Was that Latonia or was that Parker? What's that saying? Okay, well, Ms. Naylor and Ms. Gresham, roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. C is to approve a field trip request for Bowles School students to travel to Red Gate Farm in Asheville, Mass. on March 20th, 2024, returning on March 22nd, 2024. Ms. Wells, please.
Yes, similar to the Zenetti trip that you just approved, Bowles Elementary School is requesting an overnight field trip to Red Gate Farm on March 20th. The field trip form is in your packet. And Mark McCann is here via Zoom. If you have any questions, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item D, and listen to this one now. D is to approve the field trip request from Springfield Central High School students to travel to London, Normandy, and Paris, April 14th through 2024, returning on April 22nd, 2024. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This field trip request is for students to travel to London, Normandy, and Paris, where they'll be stopping at different sites and exhibits relevant to World War II, which is a very large piece of the U.S. history state frameworks. The field trip request is in your packet. And Josh Rice is here via Zoom. If you have any questions, I recommend approval of this trip.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. And Mr. Rice and Josh is on also. Any questions or comments? That's a hell of an experience, a great, great experience in tying it into World War II and our history. Any questions or comments?
I do. I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Naylor.
I'm looking at the form, and I may, I can't see it. So I know it's here somewhere. But how many students are going?
Mr. Rice, could you?
Twenty-two, ma'am.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and there's going to be three chaperones?
That includes three adult. We have three teachers that are going as well. And I have myself and two other teachers that are going as chaperones. So for students alone, it's, what is that, 19 students? EF Tours has a strict limit on how many the student-to-teacher ratio.
Okay. And then is there, it does say that it's academic. Is there a particular class that it's related to?
Most of my students are from the Advanced Placement United States History course. And as Ms. Sarno said, this is a huge part of that curriculum, as well as for the state.
Wonderful. And my last question is, for the cost, were the students required to pay for that? Or do we cover that through the school funding or something like that?
No, this was a privately engaged endeavor. And I realize it's expensive. EF Tours does a lot with the students in terms of using web tools to reach out, using almost like a GoFundMe page and giving them ample opportunities to contact their churches, their relatives, and other people to raise funds for this trip.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? And I, Josh or Mr. Rice, I love the history, history and social studies. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Have a great trip. E is to approve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. E is to approve an expenditure of $30,000 for Central High School from the Davis Foundation. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This year, Central added an Advanced Placement African-American Studies course at their school taught by Cedric Cunningham and Kathleen Morris. One of the initiatives for the students this year was to bring them to Washington, D.C. to view a variety of museum exhibits, including attending the National Museum of African-American Studies. Kathleen and Cedric worked to secure a grant to support the costs of that. And so worked to secure the $30,000 grant with the Davis Foundation, which will cover the costs of the trip for all the students. The grant pieces in your packet. And Kathleen Morris is here via Zoom if you have any questions. This has also been through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Chair Person Collins.
Chair Collins?
I just think we should give thanks to the Davis Foundation, who stepped up to support this for the students. It's a significant, $30,000 is a significant amount to give for something like this.
John and Steve have always been great, especially when it comes to education. I don't know if there's any questions or comments. As Ms. Wells indicated, I believe Kathleen is on or Cedric's on too. But that's also a great trip to be able to go to the African-American Museum. Yes, Ms. Gresham? Can we get clarification on if Kathleen or Cedric's on? How many, Ms. Gresham would like to know how many students are going?
I think they're there, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're right there. I keep looking at Zoom. Thank you for being here. Come on up to the podium. Thank you, Kathleen. I apologize.
No, that's okay. All right. So what was the question? I'm sorry.
How many students are going?
Fifty students.
Fifty, still wonderful.
Wow.
What an experience.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathleen. Any other?
I did want to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. I really, I participated in the African-American Studies when I was at Central. I won't say how long ago. But it was always a very good program. And it's really nice to see it continuing to elevate and for our students to have this opportunity to go to D.C. and go to the museum and have that experience is really just life-changing. So thank you all for advocating for this. And as Mr. Mayor said, we thank the Davis Foundation for standing behind this experience to continue to educate our kids in D E I work. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Kathleen, thank you very much. My apologies. Any other questions or comments? Tell Cedric I said hello to him. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much, and have a great trip. F is to approve field trip requests for Central High School students to travel to Washington, D.C. on March 28th, returning on March 30th, 2024. Ms. Wells, please.
So thank you, Mayor. This is the field trip that we just approved the grant for. Students will be leaving on March 28th and returning on the 30th to attend the various museums and the National African-American Museum of Art. So Kathleen is here. If you have any questions, I recommend approval of the trip.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Gonzalez is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. G is to approve an expenditure of $518,000 for Springfield Empowerment Zone program, subaward for Young Adult Access Centers grant from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health via Brookline Center for Community Health. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Brunel, the co-executive director of the Springfield Empowerment Zone, is here via Zoom to speak on this grant, which has been through Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Subcommittee Chair Collins.
Director Brunel, Matt?
Great. Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. This grant is a grant from the Department of Mental Health, pursued by SECP Chief of Student Supports and Services, Keisha Morgan, in recognition of the significant mental health challenges that are persisting post-COVID. In particular, this intervention, the BRIGHT Program, stands for the Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition, is to really help students who have undergone a significant mental health disruption, so either hospitalization, partial hospitalization, therapeutic or residential stays, transition back into school. It's intended to be a short-term, intensive, tier-three intervention for students. And it's all students without disabilities. Our hope with this multi-year grant, the 518, is both for the balance of this year as well as for next school year is to do what we're doing with a number of other initiatives, which is to look after the mental health of our students at this critical time. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments? It's an important grant. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by everybody. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. H is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Matt. H is approve expenditure of $10,000 for Chronic Absenteeism Initiative from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Acronym DESI. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a $10,000 grant to work on chronic absenteeism and has been through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Subcommittee Chair Person Collins. Jose Escobano is here via Zoom if you have any questions and to review the grant.
Mr. Collins?
No, the grant was, Jose did a great job explaining it at the Subcommittee. There were a number of questions, but at the end of it, it was, we believed it was well worth the initiative. I don't know if Jose wants to give any more explanation on it?
Mr. Escobano, Jose?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, School Committee. After speaking with DESI this week, they recognized that it is a small amount of money, given the magnitude of chronic absenteeism. But the three areas that they're really looking at are family engagement, tracking systems, and then also buyback program. So these are three areas that, you know, I know we spoke about family engagement and tracking system. But also, speaking with them this week, we are looking at our buyback program. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the grant or, you know, absenteeism.
Thank you, Mr. Escobano. Any questions or comments, Jose? Ms. Gresham, please.
Mr. Escobano, is it district-wide? Is absenteeism district-wide, or is it?
Correct. It's district-wide. Again, it's only 10,000. So we really want to see, like, how do we maximize the amount of money, or the 10,000, so that we can have the biggest impact when it comes to addressing or beginning to address the issue?
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Just one addition. Jose, with your discussions with DESI, since they did recognize it's not a lot of money to help address such a significant issue, did they indicate if there would be more monies available?
I believe there is more money. I think what they're really looking at doing is there's a, something before DESI now regarding chronic absenteeism weighing it heavy on the, or having a more significant weight on accountability. So depending on how that goes with the board, there could be some additional funding next year, specifically those three categories that I spoke about, tracking systems, how we track attendance, the buyback program, and family and community engagement.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, just one question, Ms. Naylor. Once this process, because I know that it's pretty quickly as well, we have to have it done by June. So it would be really wonderful if we can get some type of summary once this is done, just to get an idea of what the next step is. Because as Mr. Escobano stated, it's not a lot of money for the depth of the work that needs to be done, but at least gives us some guidance as to where we need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. I is to approve a transfer of the amount of $345,000 from the Reserve for contingencies to legal fees. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to transfer funds from Reserve to cover outside legal services for the remainder of the fiscal year. This has been through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Subcommittee Chair Collins. And Attorney Phelps is here, along with Pat Roach, via Zoom, to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Collins first?
Unfortunately, we're living in an increasingly litigious time. And with an increasing number of cases that come up. And sometimes, they're starting to name other people within the department. And so we must go to outside counsel. We couldn't use inside counsel because of the people they name. And so that's really the case here. I'm sure Attorney Phelps could add more, but that's basically what it is, is we must use outside counsel. And we didn't anticipate this, quite honestly.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I don't know if Attorney Phelps or Pat Roach.
Thank you. The request is for unbudgeted, unplanned for litigation over the next six months that came in and last six months. We have spent the entire amount that we were allocated in this year's budget. And we're looking for money in two categories. It's for outside counsel, Volkley-Richardson. That amount represents money for a trial, as well as we straightlined, and I worked with Pat Roach's team, to straightline what our monthly expenses were and anticipated those projecting forward for the next six months. The law offices of Sean Sweeney, as you know, Sean Sweeney is the labor attorney. There are several collective bargaining agreements that are coming up for expiration. And negotiations will be ongoing in the next six months. So that is an increase for him as a result of the collective bargaining agreements. There's a $20,000 contingency in there as well. Obviously, if the money is not spent, it will go back and be part of any carryover for usage in next fiscal year.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Attorney. And just to clarify to the viewing audience and the audience that is in the chamber, sometimes, you know, the votes go through within seconds or a minute or so. A lot of the hard work and the background work is done in subcommittees, which many times, they'll spend more than a few hours on that. So I just want to reiterate that. J is to approve a transfer from carryover to legal services, the amount of $2,726.50. Ms. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second request to approve a transfer from carryover to cover the cost of legal services. It has also been through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Subcommittee Chair Collins and Attorney Phelps. And Pat Roach are here to answer any questions.
Mr. Collins, please.
The difference between this and the last is this is for services we've already received, that we didn't have money in the budget to pay for. And the one prior was for anticipated services. So we actually do need this because this is an outstanding bill that we have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that the bill came in after the close of the fiscal year. So the books were closed, and we need to use carryover funds in order to pay for it.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst? Absent. Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, more insufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. K is to approve by majority vote of the school committee the revoking of the consolidation of financial functions of the school committee with those of the City of Springfield, pursuant, I'm persuading, I'm sorry, to the Mass. General Laws, Section C 71, Section 37mB. Ms. Wells, and I'm sure we have Attorney Phelps also to clarify that.
Thank you, Mayor. This has also been, this item has been through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee with Vice Chair of the Subcommittee, Mr. Collins. And I'd like to turn it over to Attorney Phelps and Mr. Collins to fill you in on this.
Sure. Just for the public, what, it's a tough memory for all of us. But most people remember when Springfield had a control board. And when they passed the control board, it was very sweeping in granting the control board powers. And one of the things it did is there was a paragraph in there that said that the control board also took over authorities which are statutorily granted to this committee on running the finances of the school committee. And in it, they specifically said, they built in a sunset that this may be reversed once all of the debt has been paid back, which it has long been paid back.
Paid it back much earlier than the guideline, years ago.
It was paid back way ahead of time. And it was, and the other significant part of this is during that period of time, working very closely with the School Department and TJ Plan, we have put in a lot of structures that would prevent anything from this happening again. There's been a lot of changes made so that it's redundant at this point. It's not needed. The state did anticipate it sunsetting, but we must take a vote in order to make that happen, to make that go away. If we don't, you get a, we all know that TJ Plan has left. A new CFO might come in here thinking that they have day-to-day operational authority over the School Department, and they really. over the School Department, and they, they really shouldn't have that. It's not anticipated in the statutes.
He or she will have enough issues to deal with on the city side. Don't worry about that. But yeah, we, the checks and balances are in there. And also, we've had a great working relationship on the city side and the school side. I don't know.
We have the envy of the state with that relationship.
We hear it all the time. I know that Ms. Naylor, when she represents us, or Ms. Hurst, they hear that all the time, and the superintendent's meeting. Attorney Phelps, do you, anything you want to add at all?
This is really a housekeeping measure to clean it up, but clearly the statute envisioned that there would be sunset to this, that it would go away, and it does require, if the statute says, it may be revoked by a majority vote of the School Committee.
Okay.
So that's before you tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gresham, yeah.
I understand, thank you. So, so right now, how is it as it is right now?
It is separate functions. The School Committee's budget, and the School Committee has its own Chief Fiscal Officer, Mr. Roach, who's administering the School Department budget. And then the city has their own, or had their own CFO, and is searching for a new CFO to manage the city side of the budget. So it really is a housekeeping, nothing's going to change. It just endorses what the statute allowed us to do, is after the control board left and things went back to being separate, we just need to take a vote by the majority of the School Committee to enshrine that.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, warning sufficient, votes matter passes. Thank you. We'll move to Section 4 now, informational discussion items, and we're going to recognize Focus Springfield, who has been outstanding partners prior to the COVID worldwide 19 pandemic, but was extremely essential in making sure that we kept city operations and school operations going and transparent to the public. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Wells, and then Stevie and crew can come up here, and I'm sure that School Committee members will have some good things to say. Ms. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a minute to recognize Focus Springfield and thank them for the vital role that they played during the COVID-19 pandemic, whether it was helping us with town hall meetings, or helping us to develop and broadcast our online graduations, or recording and broadcasting School Committee meetings so that we could continue with business and move through the work you did with us during this time. And it was a really difficult time, was tremendous. And so on behalf of the superintendent and, and the public schools, from the very bottom of our hearts, we just want to thank you, because honestly, we wouldn't have been able to get through it as smoothly without you. So I just want to thank you and your team.
Thank you, thank you. School Committee members?
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Naylor.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All I can think about is the town hall that we had, where we had 15 different languages speaking in a way of, of speaking, 15 different rooms of people with all different kinds of languages, and we were able to have that town hall and share with our families and make sure that they understood what was happening, how to do certain things, so that they could keep in touch with the district and with their schools and their families. Just that communication was so vital, and we were the only ones to do something like that in the entire Commonwealth. And you all took on the challenge, and you made it happen, and it went seamlessly, and we were, first of all, didn't expect that level of excellence. We were just like, let's just have a Zoom, and y'all were like, no, this is what we're doing, and y'all were able to help us make that happen in such a way. So I just, that to me was like the epitome of everything that y'all have been able to do for us, in making us look good, and making us be able to communicate with our constituents and with our families. So thank you for always thinking ahead, for having such a great team of folks that are so flexible, so nimble, and so patient, because we definitely needed that patience then, and we still need it now. So thank you.
Well put. Thank you. School Committee members, Mr. Collins?
Sure, and, and I, I want to pick up on that word that Latonya just used, excellence, because it was really your expertise and your excellence. When, when COVID hit and we were thrown into this situation, nobody had the kind of technology that necessary to do this. When I was growing up, you'd say it was put together with spit and bubble gum. Some people might say baling wire and duct tape, but it was the tech, having the limited technology that you had to pull this off, where we could have live, and we could have people zoom in, and unlike other portions of the state, no interruptions from the public.
We didn't get bombed.
We, it.
Knocking on wood.
And that's, that was due to the expertise and efforts of Focus, and we are very grateful for what you've done for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other School Committee members? Listen, Stevie, who I call the halfback, because in our younger days, we played soccer together, and he could run like the wind, and I was the crazy goalie, as you'd say. But Stevie to you, Hostway, George, your whole crew, you were, you've been extremely instrumental. We were flying the plane as we were building it. You know, we dealt with a number of natural man-made disasters, so, but this one, there was no playbook, and we kept things going and transparent to the public. And I think what Ms. Naylor said and Mr. Collins, we also kept the participation factor there on it. And, you know, we're deeply appreciative of that, and just wanted to make sure we honor you and your team and highlight it. And with that, if there's nothing else more to be said, the podium is yours, Steve.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Get a little choked up remembering all that stuff, but I have to say that as a former teacher of high school and college, that it was very apparent what we needed to do for your body of government. And so I'm, I'm very proud, I'm very grateful. I am proud of my team, and I want to celebrate Brendan Holland, who's no longer with us.
Yeah, Brendan was great.
But there was a lot of spit and bubble gum, I got to tell you. But there was a lot of figuring out what, what new tools were available that we were buying on a regular basis, just to see if it worked. And there's an old expression in television for live broadcasts that, take no offense to this, this is for live sports, just like municipal government, but it's that it's hours of boredom punctuated by nanoseconds of terror. And there was an awful lot of that. But as I mentioned, Brendan Holland, there's a, there's a quiet force in the room and at the station in Hostway-Vazquez, and the three of us circled our wagons and tried to figure out to do what wasn't done before, and they got used to it quicker than I did because I kept looking at it, saying, this is science fiction when I was your age, this is completely impossible. But I want to thank you all very, very much, and very grateful for these words.
Steve, can they come out, bring out the crew, Georgie and the crew for a second?
Absolutely. I was going to say, it's with a little bit of irony, we're experiencing some technical difficulties tonight, but please, come on out, guys.
Come on out, crew.
If it goes black for a minute, we're okay.
George, hey.
Hostway's holding it together back there.
Stay, Hostway.
Okay, so George is a new member, Hostway's been with us since he was an intern when we were a new TV station, and I'm grateful to still have him with us, but I thank you all very much. I know you have a lot to get through, and I can't wait to hear what you all have to say.
Well, we have here in recognition of Focus Springfield for your extraordinary contributions during the COVID-19 pandemic. Your innovative spirit illuminated a path of transparency and democracy for the Springfield Public Schools with the production of a series of multilingual, as Ms. Naylor indicated, town hall meetings. Your dedication cultivated a sense of unity and celebration with the broadcast of virtual graduations, I remember those, for each of our city's public high schools. Springfield Public Schools deeply appreciates your ongoing collaborative approach and unwavering commitment to the excellence for our community, and this is from each and every one of us from the School Committee and obviously the School Department Administration, too. Thank you. Glad you're ready to go. Kettle Corn King right there, too. Talking about, we got continued excellence here with the Renaissance School Sustainability Expedition update. I know Principal Wright is here. I see the Renaissance crew is here. Principal, did you want to lead in? Come on up.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor and School Committee for having us tonight. We're excited to share our research of our current ninth graders. We came a little while ago about our lunch trays, and we're excited to share our work around food waste this year. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Superintendent Warwick and his cabinet members for their continued support. The students will share a site visit we got scheduled for in a couple of weeks, set up by Pat Roach, and also our SEDEXO team that's been so willing and able to come in, talk to our students, and be able to help us through all of our research as we work to make Renaissance and the district more sustainable in everything that we do. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Donovan, our environmental science teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Don, you guys look sharp tonight, too. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and I just want to echo all the thank yous to all of you and Superintendent Warwick for just giving our kids the opportunity to come here. I'm very proud of the students who are in the room, but also hoping that some of them are watching at home on YouTube, and we have about 80 students that have been working for the last two months since the last time that we were here, working to address food waste, and they're really excited to talk to you guys about it. So I'm going to turn it over to Kaylee.
I would like to start by thanking Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, Mr. Wright, and the rest of the School Committee. Today, we'll be presenting Renaissance Sustainability Expedition results and recommendations. But first, let's start with a celebration. Three months ago, Renaissance and schools across SPS used styrofoam trays for lunch. But thanks to the hard work of last year's ninth grade expeditions, SPS now has 20 schools in the district that have shifted to biodegradable paper trays. What's next? As our district makes this important shift, one thing is very apparent. We have thousands of compostable trays that are being thrown away, not composted. We figured out a solution that helps divert paper trays and food waste across Springfield Public Schools from piling up in a landfill. Our solution: commercial composting. The ninth grade class at Renaissance is recommending that Springfield Public Schools start a commercial composting program for the whole district to divert food waste from landfills. Our agenda for today is going to be an expedition overview. Why is food waste a problem? What does food waste look like at Renaissance? Solutions and recommendations to food waste? Questions and comments? Now I'd like to welcome my classmate, Edward.
The essential question of our expedition is, how can we make Renaissance a more environmental, sustainable school? For the past two months, we've been working on our expedition in our classes, mostly on ELA and environmental science, and even in our history and math class. We conducted a food waste audit in our school, and we mainly focused on the 41 pounds of food waste we collected. We ended our expedition kickoff by attending the press conference where several news organizations attended. This inspired us to want to create change in our school. We focus on food waste as our expedition because the large amount that we generate of it in our school, and because we also started learning about the impacts that it has on us and the environment. Here are some facts about food waste. The average person throws away about 200 to 300 foods, pounds of food annually. Americans waste about $400 billion annually on food waste. About 30 to 40% of food that is produced globally is wasted. Now, present, Janio, my classmate. Now I am going to talk about why food waste is a problem. A problem is landfills. Most food that is wasted ends up in a landfill. 25% of waste in landfills is food waste. When food breaks down in an anaerobic environment, it creates methane. Methane is a powerful greenhouse gas that contributes to climate change. In the United States, we are running out of landfill space. For example, sits out of seven landfills en masse are expected to close by 2030. Another food waste problem that we have is cost. More than $1 trillion is wasted per year globally on food that is thrown away. Things we waste money on is buying food that isn't eaten, agriculture, transportation of foods, and the cost of trash pickups to bring to landfills. Another problem is food insecurity. Ms. Hurst asked us about this in our last presentation. Food insecurity is when a person doesn't have enough nutritional food to eat or doesn't know when their next meal will be. We collected data from our school, and we figured out that 25% of our students experience food insecurity. Food waste is such an important issue to address because so many in our community experience food insecurity. Now, my classmate, Cory.
What does the food waste issue look like at Renaissance? In support to the food waste issue, our community worked together to form a food waste audit to determine how much food is wasted at Renaissance each day. Our students saved their breakfast and lunch food waste from middle school and high school and calculated that there was about 80.4 pounds of food wasted per day. In continuation, during our math period, we calculated from 80 pounds daily that Renaissance as a school wastes 14,000 pounds of food waste, while SPS as a district wastes over 700,000 pounds of food each year. We wanted to make sure our estimate was accurate, so we compared it to Recycling Works Massachusetts' estimator. Our numbers were close, which made us feel more confident in our math.
We conducted a food waste survey at our school to see why students were throwing away so much food each day. We came up with questions for the survey, and we had the students take the survey in class. We have the survey linked in our slides, if you guys would like to take a look at it yourselves. Our biggest takeaway from the survey was that we throw away more food at school than at home. Students answered, this is because at home, they choose when or what they eat, and they have proportion size at home. We interviewed SEDEXO and Homegrown Springfield to ask them questions, and they told us they actually offer surveys three times a year for input on food options, et cetera. They are going to work with us to improve food experience in the future. Their focus is not reducing food waste, but on school nutrition. Resolution writing. In English class, we organized thoughts and recommendations by writing a school committee resolution. We know and understand that you don't use resolutions to vote, but we found it helpful for us to formally gather our ideas.
Now here, now here are the solutions that we provided. We explored various ways to rid of food waste, such as feeding animals or anaerobic digestion, but we ultimately chose composting as one of the better fits for our school. Composting is a natural process where bacteria and other microorganisms break down the food waste and other organic material into fertilizer, which helps the soil and helps plants grow. To the left of that image, you can see, that's day one of composting, and then to the right of the image, you can see the compost on month four. Gardening composting won't work for our school because there are a lot of restrictions. We can't have meat, dairy, bones, trays, and other large quantities of food. Commercial composting is what we need because it takes all food, trays, and other compostable certified materials, and can take large quantities of food that we're producing. Meanwhile, commercial composting is when food waste is sent to a large facility in place of sending onto a landfill to get broken down into. onto a landfill to get broken down into compostable material. This process results in the removal of all methane that is typically produced in composting, which is better for climate change. There's no food restrictions as well as the paper trays. It uses significantly less landfill space and uses compost to grow new plants. It also improves the fertility in soil. How does this work? This process is quite simple. We sort out our compostable material from trash items, and our company collects our waste, and we do our part in helping the environment.
We did some research, and we are recommending Commonwealth Sustainability. It is located in Ludlow. We interviewed them, and some of the things we liked of the company was they are already servicing multiple school districts like East Long Meadow and Beltratown. They have a big emphasis on education and collaborating with schools. They are ready to start planning with school committee and decision makers. We talked to them about the cost of their services, and it would be $10.50 for every 100 students per week. There are roughly 24,000 students in the district. It would be around 2,520 per week. We also estimated the amount of money it would be for 240 to 350 totals that would be needed. It would be $15,000 to $25,000. There are grants available to help with this. We also estimated how much their services would cost for one school year, and it would be around $1,1100, $130,000. It may seem like a lot of money, but we divided how much it would be per year and the amount of students in the district, and it would come out to be $4 to $6 per student for the whole school year. Money, it would be money that won't be going towards trash pickup anymore. It would be going, it would be diverted to composting, and it would cost less after the first year since we won't have to buy the totals again. We also have a site visit with Pat Roach. Pat Roach is coming to Renaissance on February 13 to discuss composting at Renaissance. This was something that Mr. Wright helped us organize as we were preparing for this meeting.
Nice job.
Here are some of our recommendations for you, the school committee.
You're not going to have Pat Roach dig through the garbage, are you? How, Pat, you hear that?
First, we would like to ask for commercial composting for all schools in the district as soon as possible. When we mean as soon as possible, we mean to get this as many as in many schools as possible. Another thing that we ask you, the school committee, is to create a pilot composting program at Renaissance during this school year. We would also like you, the school committee, to work with SEDEXO, Homegrown Springfield, and the students and staff of SPS to find ways to reduce food waste and improve the breakfast and lunch experience. Lastly, we would also like you, the school committee, to remove, to continue removing food trays from all, styrofoam food trays from all SPS.
Tough negotiators here.
Why should we be doing this? Because a lot of other schools and districts are already on board with a composting program. It can significantly reduce the cost of trash pickup since less trash is being made and less frequent pickups are required, and there's also grants that are there to aid us with equipment. This idea also aligns with Portrait of a Graduate, specifically civic and global contributing. If this plan were to be brought to action, it could benefit the environment and also resilient achievers, seeing as we won't stop at nothing until this issue is addressed and resolved. When bringing this action into motion, it can ensure the positive press along the way. This can aid our compostable tray solution as well as with our beginning step towards making a change and further provide a strong initiative for our environmental sustainability. During our interview with SEDEXO, we found out that our compostable trays aren't BPI certified, and a result of this, we reached out to Andrew Stratton, the general manager of SEDEXO for Springfield Public Schools, and he claimed that they were actively working to get the trays BPI certified. Needless to say, the impact for the environment isn't only limited to here, but includes beneficial areas of growth for all of the future as a societal perspective for all. To conclude our proposal, equity also has a role in this cause. We shouldn't have to experience the negative impacts that food waste brings just because we hasn't, just because we haven't addressed it. We want to be able to have the same opportunity as other students in different districts also have.
Nice job.
I want to thank you all for listening to us. What questions or comments do you have?
First of all, thank you. Very, very thorough. And to Principal Wright and the rest of your team there, you saw a problem, you tackled the problem, you researched the problem, and then you've given solutions, and you've given proof to it on how we can move forward. So Renaissance sort of has the reputation of doing that. We've done that a number of years with some other different issues. But I'll open it up to school committee members and Ms. Wells for any questions or comments. Mr. Collins?
I have one, one, actually, wonderful job, you guys. I love all environmental programs and
Yeah, conservation.
I have a suggestion that you set up another meeting, not with Pat Roach, but with Congressman Neal's office, who's on Ways and Means Committee. There are a number of federal agencies, the Agricultural Agency, the Department of Interior, that may have grant sources for you to look for, which would actually bring you into another whole learning experience of researching grants and helping to suggest the right grants and working with the congressman's office. You may be able to find a way to not only get this completely implemented, but at so with taxpayer, at so with with grants from the federal government, because there's, no one knows better than the Ways and Means Committee what money is out there. So I would suggest that maybe a next step along with Pat Roach might be to meet with the congressman.
Thank you so much for your suggestion. We will keep that in mind.
So, you know, besides local news, you could be making national news, too. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a comment, Mr. Mayor. One of the things, too, that I would like to echo, first of all, the comments of my colleague, that this is an exceptional proposal and an exceptional presentation. I've sat in rooms at the college with people who are supposed to know how to do this stuff well, and you all can go and show them a few things. So I first want to say that I love the fact that you're not just talking about the monetary piece. I'm a, I teach this kind of stuff, and one of the things that I say to people is you have to appeal to the expresser, the relator, the driver, like all of that, and y'all did all of that. You were able to look at the numbers, you're able to express and make people relate to what you're saying and feel it and see the benefits of it holistically. And the one thing that really stood out to me is especially when we talk about, Mr. Mayor, the work that you have proposed around the recycling and all of that stuff, is that you all teaching this in school now means that in five years, 10 years, everybody is going to be practicing this. So by us thinking about it, not just in Renaissance, but throughout the district, our pre-K kids are learning about this when they come into pre-K, and this is what is going to be a norm for them. And then in 10 or 15 years, they're teaching their kids, and it just becomes such an important legacy in our city for us to be mindful of what we're doing to our environment and how it can be harmful to ourselves. So I love everything that y'all said. I learned some things that I didn't know about composting. My husband's always talking about it, and I'm like, whatever, I don't understand that stuff. But, but now I can understand a little bit more. But I also think that for the value of what we get out of this, what you're proposing is absolutely necessary for us to consider doing so. Thank you. I'm going to be quiet now, but I just really appreciate everything that y'all said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? How about the other Ms. Naylor? Don't be bashful, you know. You can, you can jump in, too, you know.
I really enjoyed the presentation. It was very inspiring. Y'all guys really put together everything that y'all needed to to propose to everybody, and everybody seemed very impressed up here. I was impressed. I was looking, I was looking at my dad back there. He was impressed. He was like, wow. He was like, they got all the facts together. And I'm just, I really am, y'all set the, y'all set the bar for me, you know? Next time I do a presentation, I know what to do. But it was really great to watch, and I think that it's a positive thing for our community. So thank you for your time for putting that together.
Thank you.
Thank you, patience. Any other questions or comments? I'd have to say this is a natural progression because a number of years ago, we started recycling. Matter of fact, Renaissance could have had a, a play on that, too, when we started recycling paper in not only the schools, but City Hall. That's a common fact now for recycling. But with the, with DPW, one of the, not too many communities were single stream, and we've been ahead of, ahead of the curve on that. So, but again, I'm not, never surprised what Renaissance brings to the table on it. So I don't know if Ms. Wells wants to comment, but I'm sure that we'll have an action agenda. I know we already with the trays, we're going to start something. And Ms. Wells?
I think it's, it's just another exciting opportunity, right? So when we started this work with the styrofoam trays, it took some time to find the right solutions. But working collaboratively together, both the school and people from central office, we were able to come up with a solution that, that really made history, both like in the city with, with the trays and at the school. And I just think that this is the start of the next opportunity to really improve the carbon footprint and the environmental issues that we're facing. And I know that we're committed to working with the school and with the students to really find solutions to that. So really great job, kids. I, last time we talked, I tell you, advocate and find your voices, and you're, you're continuing to do that. So we're just really proud of the work that you're doing. Great job.
Nice job.
Thank you.
One of the comments, kids, you know, I'm as old as dirt. And when I, when I went to Forest Park, we used to separate the food at Forest Park, but this, the society has changed. Around Springfield in the suburbs, we had several large pig farms.
Yeah.
And we, back when I went to Forest Park, we did separate all the food, and every day, farmers came and picked up that food. So we moved away to that, which is a much worse environmental solution, and you're trying to bring us back to something that's better. So keep up the good work. Excellent.
The phoenix is rising. Nice job, Renaissance.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. One of the students talked about the resolution that they had in the presentation, and I know that we handle resolutions a certain way, but, and this is something that we could do as part of our work with the Mass Association for School Committees. This is something that we can absolutely bring forth to ask for all of the school committees to advocate for this statewide. So this is something I would, I'm saying that now as I'm thinking about it because I would like for us to circle back on that and what that looks like and how we can present that to the entire Commonwealth. But the other question that I have, Mr. Mayor, is that if we were to implement something like this, would it be a policy that we would implement, or would it just be something that superintendent could just implement if, you know, as curriculum or whatever the case may be? How does that work for us to kind of transition into a different process?
Well, we, in curriculum, we could probably run that through the curriculum and programs thing, but I think once we are able to ascertain the, who's going to do it, what the cost is, how we move forward, what's the uniformed protocol to it, then I think, I don't know if we would take a formal vote of the school committee on that. I think that's more operational, which I think
It's more of an operational issue. I think they would contract with a vendor.
Right. So I think that would move, as you could see, as a school committee, we're supportive of it anyways. But as Ms. Naylor indicated, you could start a trend throughout the Commonwealth here. So you'll, someday, as you continue to succeed, you'll look back upon this as one of your feathers and your, your cap on it. So congratulations, and thank you very much. Okay, we have some more good news coming from Bowlin School update. I believe they might be, are they Zoom or?
Yes, I'm on Zoom.
Yeah, Madam Principal?
Good evening, Mayor Sarno School Committee, Ms. Wells.
Principal Bukowski, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Just making sure that this is able to be seen. Are you all seeing it on your screens?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So my name is Lisa Bukowski, and I am the very proud principal of Bowlin School. I'd like to thank you for the invitation to speak to you this evening about our amazing school. I always get super excited when I'm given any opportunity to share anything about our school, our top-notch staff, or our spectacular students, I know many of whom are watching this evening. At Bowlin School, we have been focusing on the power of one. So just a little bit of background, we are a school, elementary school, with 580 students. Forty percent of our students have special needs, which is above the district average. We have a number of programs at our school that don't exist in all elementary schools, primarily our LINKS program. We currently have 12 classrooms of children with autism that are a substantial, substantially separate program. We have 31% of our students whose first language is not English. We have 92% of our students that are qualified for as low income, 96% high need. So we're a very high-need school. We have about 120 staff members at our school. Our recent MCAS data shows that in English language arts and in math, our school outperformed the district, and we are on pace to be catching up to the state. It's the same as true for our science and technology MCAS scores. We surpassed the district, and again, we're reaching for that state average and beyond. It wasn't always the case for us. In 2021, Bowlin School unfortunately fell to the ninth percentile across the state in our MCAS scores, which deemed us a school requiring assistance from the state. It was the first time ever Bowlin School was required, requiring assistance, but we didn't stay there for long. As you can see from this slide, the following year, we jumped to the 20th percentile. In the last school year, the 28th percentile. So from the hard work of my teachers, my professors, our students, and our parents, we more than tripled our percentile rank and are no longer a school of requiring assistance from the state.
Hell of a jump.
Thank you. When I say we focus on one, we got down to the nitty-gritty of each and every individual student and what each student needed in order to succeed, which was not a small task with a school of our size. So the first, the first thing we looked at is focusing on our small group instruction. So whole group instruction was focused on teaching the grade level content, but we found, like most schools coming out of COVID, many of our students were behind. So we decided that we were going to really focus on that small group instruction. Why are we providing small group instruction first? Who was going to benefit from that small group instruction, and what were we going to use for that small group instruction? So pinpointing what each child need, and we kind of needed, and we kind of likened it to the medical profession, so that if you're going into the doctor because you have a headache, you're not looking for a universal medical intervention of a Band-Aid. You're looking for a specific intervention that would target exactly what that, that symptom is. And that's what we did with our students and their learning. We went down to the, to the very basic fundamental breakdown, and then we remediated exactly what it was that they needed, and we used a variety of these programs, and we continue to use them today. We also focused on our subgroups. As you could see, we have a large population of students with autism, with special needs, particularly our LINKS program and our autistic students. So we made sure that they were very much included in these interventions. We gave them targeted support. We continue to do before and after-school tutoring. We're giving intervention, we have an interventionist that is hired and assigned to every grade level at the school. They are, majority of them are involved in the letters training and the science of reading and finding out exactly what it is to make students proficient readers. We're focusing on math recovery, which is one-on-one and small group math instruction. We're giving which is one-on-one and small group math instruction. We're giving ESL supports to our non-English speaking, um, students. And of course, our, our LINKS population. We have the only class in the district on the elementary level of students that are apraxic as well. So, we, we do have a very wide variety of special education needs in our school, but we're making sure that we're providing not only their special education needs, but also their academic and instructional needs as well. Um, we also decided that we needed to focus not only on academics, but focus on students socially. We have instituted all of these clubs, um, before and after school clubs in addition to the tutoring. And these are clubs that staff have stepped up for and have, um, kind of created their own, their own club, their own agenda, their own teams. And they're running every day at Boland School. You can come to school and you can see children at the school anywhere from 7:30 in the morning till 5:30 at night, providing those wraparound supports and those kind of fun activities that so many of our kids weren't getting. Um, and we've, we've continued to do this through, um, through this year. We also provide our social emotional supports, which, which many of you understand that that was a huge need, especially coming out of COVID. And we tier our students like, like other schools do. Um, our tier one, all of our students are getting the social emotional curriculum of second step, as well as PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventional Support System in our school. Our tier two kiddos, the kids that just need a little bit extra, are getting social skills groups taught by our school counselors. Um, we're doing focused group work on specific skills. We have one that's just starting, um, next week on anger management. Different topics that we're finding that students are struggling with. And we're pulling students that are dealing with those, those different challenges and we're helping them through counseling. We also use the check-in checkout system. So, we have identified students who, um, who need some extra support around their behavior. Um, and we've, we've, um, addressed that by having them tied to a staff member who checks in with them first thing in the morning and last thing in the afternoon before they go home. We also have groups that come in and work with our students. We have partners with BHN, CHD. For the first time, we did a grief group this year with our students because we have a number of students who have lost, um, parents in the last year or two. Um, and so, we're doing some grief counseling. And then we have one-on-one counseling support. So, we're trying to embrace the entire child, not only academically, socially, but also emotionally. We provide ongoing professional development for our staff. We've been focusing on culturally responsive teaching. We've done book studies. We've had guest speakers come in. Boland School is part of the dire network of schools. We also have a group that has gone through the Unbound Ed, uh, training. In addition, we're doing the, um, district, um, professional development around ANET for math, Curriculum Associates, Math Recovery. We've had folks from the districts come in and train us. We've had, um, folks from, uh, the various companies also come in and do training. ELA, we're implementing letters. There's about a third of our staff are trained now in the science of reading. And, um, we're continuing to focus on writing at our school because that continues to be something that needs all of our attention. We're also one with our community. Um, we're very big on having, um, members of our community come in and work with our students and particularly, um, community members that look like our students. Um, you know, it's, you could see it in these photographs here. We have, um, this was our, um, our Latino recognition, uh, read aloud. Um, and just to see people that look like them coming into their school and sharing a love of reading, um, it's just, it's done so much for our students. So, we also are one with our community and our surrounding community. And then we're one school community. Um, you know, on a personal note, many of you on the, a few of you on the school committee know that I've just, um, battled my second round of cancer in, in three years. And this was, um, the day before I went out for my, um, cancer surgery in November. And just the amount of love, um, that we share at our school for one another. Um, so, we're really focused on one, the individual child, but also one as a community. And that is an update on what is going on at Boland School.
A lot of good things going on, Principal Bukowski, Lisa, and always wishing you good health too. And I'll turn it first over to, uh, Ms. Wells and then school committee members for any comments.
Yeah, I, I just want to congratulate Lisa and her team. Um, this past year, she made substantial progress towards meeting her improvement targets with a percentage of 68%, which is exceptional in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And as she mentioned in her PowerPoint presentation, her accountability target improved from 20 to 28, which means that she's no longer a priority school. And to do that, um, is really, is really a feat that is incredibly difficult to do, particularly given some of the challenges and some of the difficulties that are experienced on a day-to-day basis. So, um, her ELA growth was 53 and her math growth was 45. And so, all of that put together just shows a progression of really hard work over the last several years. And I just really want to take a moment to, to thank her and to thank her CSO, um, Darcy Al Milner, and her entire staff, her families, her students, because quite honestly, it is a community school and that work isn't done by one person. It's really done by a village. So, congratulations, Lisa. We're really, really proud of the work that you're doing over there.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
School committee members?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to say to you, Ms. Bukowski, congratulations on all the phenomenal improvements. And if there's one thing I can say about you and the work you've done at the school, I remember when I visited, uh, Boland, uh, to do one of these read alouds and I walked through and, um, I was well received. But more importantly, I, I found out something and learned something I didn't know, is that Ms. Bukowski actually has learned the language of the demographic she serves. She speaks Spanish, which she surprised me when I walked through the door and I see this woman, she addressed me in Spanish. I mean, it just goes to show her sensitivity to who she's serving, a shifting demographic in our nation, a shifting demographic here in our city and in our communities. And I appreciate you, even in the midst of your own personal adversity. God bless you. Thank you.
Mucha gracias, señor Gonzalez.
Vice Chair Gonzalez. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would. Go ahead, Ms. Gresham.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the data says it all.
Yeah?
The data says it all. So, I want to thank them for their hard work and the passion that they have for the students at Boland. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Ms. Naylor?
I definitely, I have to echo the sentiment of, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, that when you go into the building at Boland, there's just a feeling of love and support. And everyone feels like a family. From the day school starts till, you know, we're at some family event in the evening, everyone just feels so welcoming and so loving and so supportive. And it's a real, it's a testament to the culture that you've created in your building. And I know that, uh, Ms. Bukowski just came back and I saw her at the MLK event and I'm like, oh my God, what are you doing here already? You know, and she's like, girl, I'm back. I'm ready to go. And I just love it. I love everything that you stand for, everything that you do. And every time I'm in your presence, I feel more inspired. So, I can only imagine the children. So, thank you for what you do, how you continue to lead and how you continue to love our, our kids and our families.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Naylor.
Sure. Um, Lisa is, and as Latonya was saying, that sense of community that you feel and that, and that's a sign of a true leader. She empowers and she includes her people. And she doesn't brag about, you know, she didn't do much bragging about herself and that. But this kind of progress is made when you have a, a leader who will bring that entire staff in and make them part of the process and the entire community in. And on a lighter note, I mean, congratulations, Lisa, for being the kind of leader who doesn't want to try to hold everything to the vest. On a lighter note, Mrs. Naylor and I were looking over your clubs and noticed you have a cursive writing club. So, you're going to have 580 kids who can sign their names unlike a lot of other places.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Principal Bukowski, Lisa, first of all, uh, always wishing you, uh, good health and, and, you know, your strong perseverance and fortitude and you'll continue to defeat that challenge. But I want to thank you and your whole team, uh, which you've been able to do. Anytime I come to your school, it's always very, very welcoming. And the big thing with me, and I think Ms. Gresham hit it right in the head, you look at the facts. You jumped, you, you triple jumped, uh, in less than two years of percentile. You were at nine to 28. And that was very difficult to do during good times and not facing COVID and a pandemic and, and the, uh, the challenges we face in urban centers. So, uh, the proof's in the pudding. And to you and your team, to your students, to the family members, uh, we congratulate you and wish you, uh, continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, uh, we're going to move to, uh, D, which is financial literacy update. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As our continuing commitment to the portrait of a graduate work and incorporating feedback from the community, we've developed, um, financial literacy curriculum and coursework, which we've started implementing throughout the district. Michelle Balch and Tom Rochelli are here via Zoom to share more information about our financial literacy work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Michelle, Tom?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Honorable Mayor Sarno, School Committee Members. I'm so proud to be here tonight. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Rochelli, our Director of Humanities, who is going to be leading us through a presentation to talk about the great work that Springfield educators are engaging in, um, around financial literacy from K to 12 and our efforts to really make sure that, um, all students are getting what they need, um, and that they're prepared for wherever the road takes them for college, career, and life. So, Tom, take it away.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarno, esteemed members of School Committee, Chief Schools Officer Wells. Uh, as you heard, my name is Tom Rochelli. I'm the Director of Humanities. And I'm here to provide you an update on personal financial literacy here in the district. I'm going to share my screen, um, give some information. This evening, I'm going to give you a look at where we were, where we are, and where we hope to go, looking at our points along the way and aspirations for the future. So, as of right now, we are committed to addressing, um, the need for financial literacy that's been expressed by parents, students, a number of community partners. And our goal is to prepare students for real-world responsibilities and financial decisions that they will experience when they are with us and beyond us. We're starting with our youngest learners. Um, we want to provide financial literacy foundational lessons that'll teach students about money, about finances, about the myriad of career paths that are open to them. Um, while we want to look at that, we've crafted nine lessons specifically, in addition to the economic standards that are covered in the History and Social Science frameworks, we have nine lessons for each month for Financial Fridays for each grades, K through five. And it's a fun way to explore money, spending, earning, jobs, um, financial responsibilities. And it keeps it fresh. And we've looked at curating lessons from Fit Money, uh, through some, through some funding. We've written them into our lessons and we hope to provide some professional development and roll those out in the near future. At the middle school level, uh, we are continuing the path and providing age-appropriate lessons about earning and spending, um, saving as our students prepare to enter the workforce as some will become eligible, uh, for part-time jobs. We want, we're utilizing Future Smart, which is a digital curriculum and a tech-based platform that allows students to, uh, acquire information and have some fun learning on, about spending and is updated to include information on things such as gig economy, um, IRAs, uh, stocks, spending. And it's, it's really fun and engaging for students. They have, one of the culminating activities is they have a budget and they are to decorate and furnish their dorm room. So, it is making choices and it helps them make decisions on, you know, what needs are versus what wants are, um, how to utilize their funds in a responsible way to make sure that they have all of their needs met. At our high school, some of you may remember, uh, that a few, quite a few months ago, that I was before you, we were seeking to purchase foundations and personal finance for the high schools. Um, that has started to roll out and it provides an opportunity for students to then, as they are closer to entering the workforce, making decisions about college, making decisions about, you know, driving and insurance and, um, spending and saving. It really is that opportunity to make sure as they are at a mature enough level, have some really good discussions about what sort of financial impacts they're going to incur, uh, as they go to college, as they, you know, think about spending and saving. It also provides an opportunity to explore current social issues and their impact around finances. So, our path to today. Um, in 2019, we started looking at training, um, and implementation of Future Smart. We crafted lessons to go alongside the digital curriculum as, you know, we, we noticed that our teachers wanted to have a really strong foundation themselves. So, we helped craft lessons prior to even using the digital modules. And then that way they can roll out and it provides a good number of hours for our students and teachers. So, in 2019 to 2021, we developed and updated Financial Literacy Unit Planning Guides and lessons in accordance with DESI's Personal Finance, Finance Standards, which are part of the History and Social Science Frameworks. In 2021, we had an opportunity to pilot Ramsey's Foundation and Personal Finance. So, we took the course that we had developed in addition to the Ramsey Personal Finance and put that together and started to pilot it and roll it out. Again, we're, we're looking at focusing, teaching on the standards and teaching students what they need, not necessarily just, uh, one set tool. So, we put those together so that kids can have a really rich experience as they learn about spending and saving and all the responsibilities of finance. In 2022, 23, we did a field implementation pilot of the Ramsey's Foundation and Personal Finance that went broader in the district. And that was when we first, uh, you know, I first was in front of you, talking about and asking for, you know, the expenditure for that curriculum. In 22, 23, we also developed, we began developing lessons for our elementary students. So, those nine lessons across five grades ensured that our students are going to get 45 hours of personal financial literacy in addition to what is found in the curriculum, in the standards already. So, we are preparing our students with that strong base foundation. So, when they get to middle school, as they mature in high school, they'll have an understanding to go deeper into that big decision-making and understanding the, the concepts behind all of the stuff they're learning. In 23, 24, we had an increase in enrollment. That's this school year, from 513 to 772 students enrolled in personal financial literacy in the district, which is something that is, you know, really fantastic. And we're really looking forward to growing that even further. And as of right now, we're also working on vetting those elementary lessons to get that rolled out in the future. Speaking of the future, our next steps and our aspirations. In 2024, 25, we're, we're going to provide professional development to our K-5 educators about implementing those Financial Friday lessons in addition to the economics lessons which are found in the frameworks. In 24 through 26, we want to continue to increase that enrollment in that, uh, in that personal finance in our high schools, ensuring that we're building it. And it seems like it's one of those courses that as soon as kids hear about talking to one another, they're like, oh, yeah, yeah, I want to get in there. Um, and when parents know that it's available, they're like, yeah, I want my student in there. So, it's building a good buzz and it's really increasing its enrollment on its own. In addition, we want to build the, build capacity in the number of teachers that can teach the course. So, we're going to provide professional development and support in the curriculum. As we grow our student enrollment, we have to grow our teacher capacity so that everybody can have, um, all, all students can have access to the curriculum and it doesn't get closed out from them. With the goal of looking at 26, 27, to re, making revisions in our PUP Progression Plan to include personal finance of literacy as a standalone requirement or embed that content into existing course requirements. Um, and as I close, um, I just want to say that I'm really excited about all the work that's happening to help prepare our students for the world that they're entering. happening to help prepare our students for the world that they're entering and the world, you know, as they start to become a part of the workforce, as well as the next step so we can prepare them as they leave us to make strong financial choices. I came in at a time of schooling where I didn't have this, and I so wish that I had. So I'm really glad that we're able to bring this to our students, our citizens of Springfield, and, you know, help them move forward in making their decisions as they grow. Thank you so much for your time.
Michelle, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say thank you to everyone that's been working on this, and especially for The Portrait of a Graduate work. It is so commendable, and I probably say this every time, like a broken record, that when we can come together as a community and request things and work on things and study and provide data, and then see that we're putting it in action, and that's exactly what we've done with this course. And so I wanted to say that, I also wanted to say and share with the public that there was a report that talked about Massachusetts having an F when it comes to financial literacy in our schools. And I'm so happy that we're a part of the trend of making sure that our kids have financial literacy in their schools, unlike a lot of districts across the Commonwealth. And so that is definitely a testament to our leadership in making sure that we can do that. Now, I will ask my question. My question is this. You said in the enrollment that is, we're looking at going from 513 to 772 students. Is that only for the high school students that's enrolled that you're referring to with that number?
Yes. I apologize for my lack of clarity on that. We went from that 500 number up to that 772 enrollment for this year, and those are high school students. At eighth grade, all of the students, it is rolled into our History and Social Science curriculum in the district. So all of the students have access to that in grade eight for that Future Smart, those modules. But it's, right now, our high schools, it's an elective course. So students are opting into that, and we've seen an increase of over 200 students from the 22, 23 school year to the 23, 24. So we're hoping to grow that even by, you know, leaps and bounds as we go.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Tom, you're terrific.
And can you provide us with some data at some point to show us what grades the students are opting in, since it is an elective course?
Certainly.
And the 45 hours that you referenced of financial hours or literacy hours, is that in totality, or is that per year?
So that would be in totality for grades K through five. There are nine lessons, which are approximately an hour apiece, and so there would be nine at K, nine at, oh, gosh, my math's wrong, because that's actually sixth grade, so there's even more. It would be 54 hours. So there would be 54 hours of programming from K through five. So nine hours per grade level in each of the grades.
Wonderful. And I had one other question that I wrote down. I think you answered it. You answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just want to follow up on Tom's answer to Mrs. Naylor. That number of students that are currently doing, those are all high school students. You mentioned that it is rolled into the curriculum for grade eight. Do we know if ZEB is doing anything comparable? Or can you check to see whether they're, because most of the grade eight students are in the empowerment zone, are they doing something with financial literacy that equates to ours? And just let us know.
Yes, we can check.
Mr. Collins, any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Gonzalez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. I just had a question in terms of the partnerships with the financial institutions in the city. Is there any partnerships of opening up bank accounts, anything like that, for students? I know that in the past, there were programs at, you know, certain schools, especially I recall with TD Bank in particular. I don't know if we have programs like that.
Thank you.
So are we already growing some of those programs as we move in some of our pilots? For example, Central High School is working with a local savings and loan to try and grow some of that understanding as well. I'm working on having that be a part of how we grow and forging those relationships as we build capacity in our teachers and students.
I know at one time, as a point of information, we had Freedom Credit Union right in Putnam Vocational Technical Academy, too, where the kids actually, at one time, we had a little banking area there, and they worked there, too, on it. Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say this, and Mr. Collins hit on it with Bowlin School with the Cursive Writing, which is a lost talent. It's back to the future. I remember as a kid at White Street School, SAS Bank, we had passbooks, and we started saving money then. And I want to commend Superintendent Warwick and the administration and the school committee that we moved with the Portrait of a Graduate, because a lot of young people are getting in trouble financially, especially with credit card misuse. I remember in the old days, as a kid, even as you got a little bit older, you could never get a credit card. You'd have to, you know, maybe a local store start to establish your credit. I mean, you could send your dog's name in now, and you're going to get a credit card. So I think this is extremely important, and it's sort of back to the future, because this stuff was, you know, cursive writing, financial management, was all taught many years ago in our system. So to Tom and Michelle and the Superintendent Warwick and the Kim, important, and they'll pay dividends down the road, so our students in the starting young age don't get in trouble. Don't get in trouble. I see Louis back there shaking his head there. I know you're not in trouble with that. But I think it's fantastic. Ms. Wells?
Yeah, and I think, Mayor, just to echo your point, one of our last learning walks at one of our high schools, the principal and I actually spent some time in one of the financial literacy elective classes, where they were talking about credit cards and interest fees associated with credit cards. And it was astonishing to watch the students do the math and think about compound interest over time, and that if they paid their minimum balance, what it would actually cost them on their initial purchase. And to see that light go off, and then to hear them say, I'm not ever doing that, right? But then to try to balance that with, how do you build positive credit, and what does that mean? It's a difficult thing, I think, for adults to figure out. So getting that into the hands of kids ahead of time is really, I think, something that came about organically through the work of The Portrait of the Grad and that we're committed to, because we really have to get back to understanding those skills so that our kids can be successful in life. And so I'm excited about continuing that work.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any other questions or comments? The other Ms. Naylor, patients, any? No? Okay, good. Well, now, thank you to Tom and Michelle. We'll now move to the kindergarten screening update. Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle Balch, Laura Menz, and Kate Asher are here via Zoom to talk about the early literacy screener and the really promising data that's coming out of our Universal Pre-K program. So I'd like to turn it over to Michelle, who can introduce Laura and Kate.
Great. Thank you so much. Again, I'm so honored to be here to present the work of SPS educators and SPS leaders across, you know, the district, doing some amazing things with the implementation of Universal Pre-K and our Universal Screener. I have Laura Menz here, the Director of Literacy, and Kate Asher, the Supervisor of Literacy, to tell you a little bit more about the amazing work that's happening.
Give me one second. Here we go. How's that? We see that fine?
We can see it, Laura and Kate. Thank you.
Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarno, esteemed School Committee members, CSO Wells, and the Springfield community. I'm Laura Menz. I'm the Director of Literacy. And as Michelle said, I'm here with my colleague Kate Asher to share some promising data with you that does highlight the impact of the investment the district has made in Universal Pre-K on our primary grades right now. So as you all know, Massachusetts began requiring an early literacy screener in K to three two times per year for all students in K to three. So I'm going to share with you what we did in preparation for this early screener implementation, and what we're continuing to do to support educators in shifting to the use of this screener and instruction. Under that umbrella term, you might have heard Principal Bukowski refer to in a couple of slides, "the science of reading." So as we shifted to this science of reading, and it was just prior to the pandemic that we started to eliminate some practices that have been proven not to be sound and reliable and evidence-based for teaching reading, and we've shifted to what's called structured literacy under this umbrella of the science of reading. We adapted some curriculums that fit that bill, and we have been working closely with those school-based teams, such as Ms. Bukowski's team, to implement these curriculums, to create guidance documents, and to arrange professional learning for our educators. As you look at this slide, you'll notice some professional learning that we've referenced called letters, and Lisa referenced it as well. This has been a real game changer for us. It is called "The Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling." And we have about half of our schools participating right now, with about 100 in year two of the two-year program and another 100 in year one, 100 preschool teachers went through it a couple of years ago, and some administrators taking an admin course. This is a real game changer, because it's helping the educators learn about the science of reading, because so many have indicated they didn't learn how to teach reading in this way in their teacher prep programs. And quite frankly, most of them weren't taught to learn, taught to read in this way themselves as students. Before I advance, though, to the next slide, I really want to pause and say thank you to all those educators out there, because they've taken this journey with us, and they've really put a lot of faith in the materials that we've selected and the training that we put in front of them. So a real big thank you to all of those educators in Pre-K to three, and of course, across all the grade spans. Now, I want to shift to my colleague Kate Asher, who's going to talk to you about this one strategy that we're focused on tonight, Pre-K, Universal Pre-K.
Hey, thanks, Laura. So as you know, our Universal Pre-K expansion began last year when Superintendent Warwick committed to opening preschool classrooms in every single elementary school building. By providing this preschool class, by providing this high-quality preschool programming, our youngest learners have an opportunity to develop their foundational skill set and engage in cooperative play with their peers. Our enrollment continues to grow. Currently, Universal Pre-K is making an impact in just about over 2,000 Springfield children, ranging from ages three to five. In support of arming our educators with the tools for offering a nurturing and rich early learning experience, you may recall we have adopted a comprehensive, research-based curriculum that brings our Massachusetts preschool standards to life. It's hard to believe that we're already in our second year of a two-year rollout of the Frog Street Pre-K curriculum. And in the 22, 23 school year, all Pre-K through grade one educators began to implement the Hegarty curriculum for phonological and phonemic awareness. Our Pre-K teaching teams, both teachers and paraprofessionals, have participated in an initial curriculum training, as well as ongoing job-embedded coaching and modeling in partnership with Frog Street Pre-K and with our very own district early education coaches. We've partnered with the Special Education Department, and we've worked really closely with each of the building instructional leadership specialists to prepare and develop their expertise in support of continuing to strengthen the preschool experience. Anecdotally, we've often heard from kindergarten educators this year how they've already noticed the strengths in early literacy and numeracy of the students who have attended their very own preschool programming. So let's talk a little bit about the early literacy screener before we get to that data that Laura was referring to. So prior to landing with the M-Class Early Literacy Screener during the 2022, 23 academic school year, we vetted and piloted three screeners on the department that were on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's approved list. Our educators who conduct the early literacy screener receive professional training in the use of the screener, the analysis of the data, and implications for instruction. Together with our school-based leaders, we are analyzing the data and working closely with our curriculum partners to ensure that we are using the materials to effectively meet the needs of our students. And lastly, I am so very pleased to share with you that we have been accepted to DESI's Dyslexia Institute. A team of five educators and administrators will participate in professional learning that will help us to create a dyslexia action plan. But to clarify, as we consider this last bullet, I just want to be very clear that the early literacy screener does not diagnose any specific reading disability. It helps us to identify risk for reading disabilities. So this institute will help us to look at multiple data sources, our literacy materials, and we're collaboratively with our Special Education Department to further assess students at risk for any specific reading disability. Okay. Great. So let's shift now to that promising data that we hinted at earlier. We're going to look at some data that highlights the power of high-quality early childhood experiences coupled with effective early literacy instruction. Laura?
So what you're looking at here in blue shows students who are above benchmark in this first screening, and in green are at, in yellow, a little below, and in red, significantly below. And what we're seeing here is, when you look at that first bar in this bar graph, those are the students in kindergarten currently who had at least 160 days of preschool with Springfield Public Schools. And in the bottom bar, you can see comparatively the students who did not have preschool with us. So you can see that we're outperforming in that respect. This is a testament to the full-day Pre-K and to our educators in Pre-K and to those kindergarten educators who are also providing high-quality instructional materials and activities with our students. So thank you to those Pre-K and kindergarten educators. Overall, 61% of our kindergartners were proficient or above proficient on this screening. As we look a little further at this data, and you'll notice the bars, we further compare the experiences of our current kindergarten students. You'll see that children not attending any early childhood programming, that bottom bar, are behind those who attended a community-based Pre-K, that middle bar, or our SPS Pre-K, that top bar, really highlights the good work that's happening in the community and with our Springfield Public School Pre-Ks. And this wouldn't be possible without thanking some pretty amazing people. So thank you to Rose Walzac and Kate Asher, who is here with me tonight, and their respective team of coaches. This has been a huge lift, getting classrooms filled with students and filled with teachers, and getting the materials there, and getting all of this coaching done. So as a result of this expansion and this work, we're seeing more students receiving high-quality early literacy instruction in a developmentally appropriate settings at earlier ages. As you know, this results, or as you can see, this is going to result in higher performance in literacy and other academic areas that students matriculate through, through in the primary grades. And I'll just share one more piece of promising data with you before I close out. This slide is from our end-of-the-year eye-ready June reading diagnostic results. And what you're seeing here in the first third section is our kindergarten data over the last three years at the end of the year. In the middle, our first, and in the last column, our second grades. And what you're seeing here is increasingly, each year, our end-of-the-year proficiency levels are getting better. And this is really huge when we think about coming out of what we call post-pandemic learning, and the fact that so many of our younger students were either home and not being exposed to the experiences that we would have wished they had. So this really speaks to the high So this really speaks to the high-quality instruction that's going on and to the efforts we're all making to shift to the science of reading and get all of our kiddos learning to read. So that's all I have for you now. We thank you because we feel this is one of the most important topics we can be talking about with you. And we remain committed to these efforts. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Ms. Gresham?
Thank you, Ms. Mendez, Ms. Akers, for your presentation. So I have a question. You do the screening twice a year, correct?
It is required to do twice a year. We actually will do it three times a year this year. The third time will be for students who are still presenting at risk in some way. And we're looking at probably requiring it three times next year.
So when you find a student that's at risk for dyslexia, what happens? Do you?
Well, we don't know if they're at risk for dyslexia by using this screener. What we know is there's some sort of risk or there hasn't been some teaching happening, right? So when you think about the work that we're doing to shift to the science of reading, making sure our teachers have the right materials, making sure they're trained, making sure our students have the right experiences in early childhood, if they still come up with a risk, we look at what's happening in the core instruction in the classroom, what we call tier one. We also have to notify the families within 30 days that we've seen some sort of risk. And we have to tell them what we're doing to intervene. And sometimes it is just really looking at that dosage and giving kids more of good instruction. And then sometimes it's doing some further assessing and giving some other instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one question. One of my questions was actually what Mrs. Gresham just asked. And my second question is, how long will it be before we're able to look at the data to see how the impact of the universal pre-K has affected the reading success by fourth grade?
I think that's a great question. I mean, we've been looking at this for a long time, and you and I have talked about it quite a bit. So, you know, when we think about who's had pre-K, right, universal pre-K, as Kate said, this is our second full year of full-day pre-K for three- and four-year-olds in the city eligible seats. We've been doing pre-K for a long time. And we've seen some nice results with the kids who have come through with us. These kids right now in kindergarten, our goal is that they will be proficient readers when they're in third grade, and they're doing very well on that MCAS test. So the when is different for each child. And each school is doing their best to look at each of those children. I don't know if that's the answer you're looking for because I'm not sure there is an exact date for us to know when we'll know the impact. We're seeing great things from pre-K, as Kate said. Anecdotally, what kindergarten teachers and first-grade teachers are telling us, these kids are ready. They love learning about reading, they love learning about the world. And there's so much to teaching reading. It's not just the decoding, the mechanics. I mean, we need that. But it's also that knowledge building, and they have to go hand in hand.
I think that you did, you answered it, Laura, because what I gather from that is if the students have been in for two years, then within the next two years, we can kind of look at that data and see what that looks like over a timeline. Which is, I mean, just looking at the data already, I'm not surprised, and I will not be surprised that those numbers will improve. And I'm so thankful that we were the trendsetter again in this particular issue with providing universal full-day preschool to our students because it is definitely making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Laura, on the page where you have three charts, where one is SPS pre-K, non-SPS pre-K, and then no pre-K. Do we know the percentage of our kindergarten students that have had no pre-K experience?
That bottom bar is the students who have had no pre-K.
No, I know.
So you want to, you would like to know the end. Yeah, I don't have that number for you here, but we could get you that number.
Yeah, because depending upon the size of that number, we need to develop an outreach to get these kids into pre-K.
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'd be curious as to right now, what that percentage looks like. How many kids have got no pre-K? So we know what, how big of an issue and develop an outreach program to get so that there's no child in Springfield that enters kindergarten without pre-K.
We'll get you that data. The data team has been amazing at compiling this data for us, so thank you. We'll get you that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments? I have to say with Laura, and I know firsthand because she taught my daughters at Frederick Harrison, did a great job, and to Kate and to Michelle. But again, I commend Superintendent Warwick and the administration and the school committee. We are first out of the gate, as Ms. Naylor indicated, two years ago, with universal free full-day pre-K. And we have to get to our students and their families with wraparound services as early as possible. Because the more we invest on the front end, the better percentage of success we get on the back end. And now you see with Governor Healy, with Maura, that she has put in her budget for other districts to pursue this. And I saw with the percentages there that Ms. Wells, I think, 61%, 65% that were at the benchmark or above the benchmark. So, you know, it's proven, as Ms. Naylor, it's proven dividends on it. And as Mr. Collins indicated, you know, more, maybe more marketing that to the parents, guardians, or grandparents, that this is available to you, and you should take full advantage of it. And I think you're right, Laura, that we'll see a marked improvement in reading at grade level as you move forward. So I commend you and Kate, the whole team, and Michelle on it. But I don't, Ms. Wells, if you want to comment at all?
No, I mean, I think I just agree with everybody said. The implementation of a universal full-day free preschool is a game changer for the lives of our children. And to be able to get our kids in and get them the skills and the tools that they need as early on in life as possible gives them a leg up, not only for, you know, their future, but getting through successfully all of the really difficult standards that are set forth by the state. So I would just say, like, we're going to continue that work. And we can definitely get the data for you in terms of the numbers of students who aren't. Because I do think it's, it's, we're a city that's providing it for free, and that doesn't happen across the state, nor does it happen across the country. And I just think it's an untapped resource for families that we need to think about in terms of how do we get them to understand and to be aware of that there's an opportunity. It's really a gem of an opportunity that they can take advantage of.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
One additional comment if I could.
Sure.
When I saw that bar, and it just, it bled at me that we're doing something for kids that our kids aren't getting. And it made me not do what I should have done and compliment the entire group on what they've done to get this implemented. Because the proof is in that top bar. And as Latonia was looking for, when we see those kids hit grade four, it's going to be wonderful. And I was remiss at not complimenting you for all the great work that you've done in that department to have that happen, over concern for the ones who aren't getting it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Well, we share your concern for the ones who aren't getting it, though. That's the urgent work we have to do here.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to report of standing committees. Student relation, parent concerns, Ms. Gresham? Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Buildings and Maintenance Committee, Mr. Collins?
We covered the issues on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Legislative Contracts Committee, Vice Chair Gonzalez?
No, that's Ms. Naylor.
Oh, that's me. No report, Mr. Mayor?
I was gonna, well, you know what? It has, Patty, we're gonna have to correct that. She's doing double duty. Ms. Naylor?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Curriculums Programs Committee, Ms. Hurst. She's absent. Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Collins?
We covered the items on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vocational Education Committee, I don't know if Attorney Murphy could have stayed on. He might not have been able to. But Pete, we appreciate you being in there, and I'm glad you're feeling better. Technology Committee, Ms. Monroe Naylor?
Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, so we?
Her report, Mr. Mayor, I think you got the old one.
That's not, Patty, we gotta check those, please. Mr. Gonzalez, Vice Chair Gonzalez?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. School Safety Committee, Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Ms. Hurst, she is absent. Okay, now, we'll move to the star of the show. Reporter of our student representative, Patience Naylor. And thank you for your patience, by the way, too. All right, Louis, you got a fan here. Okay, yeah, look at that. As Louis sat where you sat.
Hi, my name is Patience Naylor. I am the representative. And first, I'd like to thank you all for having me here. And first, I'll be starting with some of the amazing stuff that we're doing at Putnam in our senior class fundraising. Just a little bit of a background, we were severely low as a class. We had 2,000 in our budget to support the whole year when the year started. And we needed 48,000 to be secure for graduation and prom. We've all come together, shown some serious teamwork. And with the help of Principal Johnson, the Senior Class Council, and the participation of the school, we've made some great progress. The teachers also at Putnam have been really good with their participation. They have donated, chaperoned many, donated and chaperoned many of our events. And we, and they have been easy to work with. So far, since school has started, we've raised $31,000. And we are not done yet. We have a few more fundraisers coming up that are going to be super fun and exciting. We have a Valentine's Day themed movie night that will be held at Putnam, ran by the senior class. We have a Black History Month fundraiser where we will be selling dinners. We are also working with Texas Roadhouse to hopefully host an event there for our seniors. With the Student Advisory Council, we have recently gone on a field trip to homegrown facilities where we learned how the lunches were made and many other cool things. This was a great learning experience and gave them a good insight on how things are supposed to be run and produced. We look forward to going on more insightful trips to learn in the future. Also, with the Student Advisory Council, we have been thinking and working on something good. We know our city is full of many wonderful things, is wildly diverse and full of potential. But of course, we are looking for ways to contribute and make it even better. Saying this, we joined Mass Development with the idea to add a coffee shop in our city. This place will be more than just any coffee shop or the typical café. This spot will be designed to be a third space. This place will be designed to be a third space, a place outside of school and home where students can gather. It's a place to study, to chat, to relax, and of course, enjoy some food and refreshments. Our target audience would be high school students, but we have not officially decided on an age group number yet. As we continue working on this, I will be updating you all with the progress. Personally, I love this idea because the benefits are endless. This coffee shop could be a hub for the youth. It could become a hub for the youth, a place where ideas are shared, relationships are built, and our sense of community can be strengthened. It could also be a place where different clubs and activity days could be held. My hope for this project is to first, help work, get it done, and then maybe use the first one to inspire others to add more third-party spaces like this in the community. Typically, a few in our school zones that students could walk to and enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patience. Any questions or any comments, Ms. Naylor?
Of course. I'm not gonna criticize anything she said. Because she said everything correct, and she did such a great job. I'm so proud of you. And she knows I'm her biggest critic, but I'm also her biggest supporter. So thank you, Patience, for that beautiful report. And I love the idea of students having a safe space that they can gather locally to their school so they don't have to worry about transportation, but also being able to unwind and do things and be creative. That's just such a beautiful idea. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that come into fruition.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gresham?
Patience, you did a really good job. So I want to know where and when the dinners are gonna be.
Currently, we're working on that for, it's gonna be done during Black History Month, so we have to get that together at our school. This is something that we've been working on. We're still getting it signed off, but it's up and running. So I'll let you know.
Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Ms. Wells?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Patience. I know that she was a little nervous about doing this. And she has done a fantastic job. She's also been a really great contributing member to our district Student Advisory Council. A lot of the work that you've heard and that you've heard tonight, and you'll hear from all of our kids, is happening because of them using their voices and advocating for some of the things that they'd like to see. And so when you come up here, Patience, you do a fantastic job of representing those voices. And, you know, we're looking forward to continuing to really see where our different projects can go because that's, you know, it's interesting today, Mr. Gonzalez and I were at a school where we were talking about kids and their voices and, you know, younger kids and coming up and finding their voices in that. And you guys are really great examples for students coming after you to really advocate for the things that you want. So I just appreciate you being here and for being a part of the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Again, Vice Chair Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, Patience, thank you for the report. And I want to second Ms. Gresham's comment, especially the hour that it is. Let us know about those dinners.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Patience, if you were nervous about doing it, it didn't come across. It came across very professionally. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. You know, Louis Gonzalez, great job. Patience Naylor, a great job. And I must say, Patience, the apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. So with your mom and dad there, we're glad to have you on board. But I could make, I knew I could make book when I said, was there any questions? That your mom was definitely gonna ask a question there, so. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Great job, great job. Glad to have you on board. Reporter of the superintendent, Ms. Wells, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There are just two short items in the report. The first one is just a message to families as part of our commitment to capturing family voices. The district has gone live with its 2024 Portrait of a Graduate Family Survey. The survey is available on the SPS website at www.SpringfieldPublicSchools.com. And it is open until February 16th and should only take about 10 minutes to complete. For families who fill out the survey, they will be entered to win one of 20 $25 Amazon gift cards. So again, www.SpringfieldPublicSchools.com. If the school committee remembers, we administered this survey towards the end of last year. We have started it much earlier this year and expanded the time window for which it's open. So we're hoping that we get more input and feedback from the families because it really is about taking all of the community input. So looking forward to seeing what the families have to say. The last item in the superintendent's report is there is a copy of the most recent Springfield Educator magazine in your packet. You will see on the cover and read throughout stories and pictures about the many talented individuals who serve our students in one way or another. And so I would encourage you to read it because we have a really great group of people who work in this district. And it's really nice to be able to celebrate their work. So that's there for availability to read at your leisure. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Gonzalez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call voters require. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
He said he may have to leave at the end of the meeting, he had a test.
Attorney Murphy, absent, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Good evening, and thank you for watching, and good health, and God bless. Patience?